All right, Stephen, are you all set? We get to turn.
Yep.
All right. I'll note it's about six o'clock here. And we'll call the January 4th, 2022 zoning board of appeals meeting to order. First, we'll start with a roll call. Craig Manat, I'm here. David, here. Nola?
Here.
Martha?
Here.
And Scott?
Here.
Thank you. All right, everybody has had an opportunity to review the agenda for today's meeting. If there are no changes or corrections, additions.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support. All right, there's the motion that has been supported to approve the agenda. Any comments regarding that motion? Otherwise, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next will be the approval of the minutes for our November 9th, 2021 meeting. As I recall reading through here, we really have two, not two sets, but we have the minutes that accurately reflected the meeting that we had. There were also a proposed amendment that was attached to those regarding, really just not even changing the wording as much as clarifying one of our points. So I don't know if anybody has thoughts regarding the amendment. We could probably address that amendment first and then look at the minutes as well. I don't see any favor even so kind to give us a proposed motion.
With that being the case, I'm a good reader. I make a motion to approve the proposed meeting minutes for the November 9th, 2021 zoning board of appeals meeting with the amendment suggested and prepared by the township attorney.
I support that.
All right, we have a motion and a support for the November 9th, 2021 minutes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Otherwise, we'll mark Mr. Holland as abstained since he was not here at that point. All right, we'll note we don't have any items for public hearing. We do have some communications regarding a staff report to discuss, I think, some of our past. Well, let me see here. I thought that was our enforcement process. We do have. All right, it looks like our staff report is covering essentially our new business items. So we'll specifically go over that right now. But otherwise, are there any old business that anybody would like to bring before the board's attention? All right, seeing or hearing none, we'll move on to new business, which really has two parts. One is the discussion of the enforcement process. I know we've had that come up a couple of times, as well as our election of officers for 2022. All right, I know there's been a fair amount of discussion regarding our new ordinance enforcement process. And Scott, to give you the very, very bird's eye review, one of the processes that have been put in place is that if there's an ordinance violation, we've got junk, for example. So you've got yard full of junk cars, and eventually the neighbor's complaint starts the process, and so on and so forth. As a final step before the township would take somebody to court filing a complaint, et cetera, is to then have a review before us, so that we go through and make sure that they follow the steps that were required, which is what this resolution has set. We've done this a couple of times, and I know Ken, who was our previous board member, had some concerns with that. I've had some concerns with that. Jeff and I, we talked about it at a different meeting, just off the record, kind of having something to do about it. And I think that might be one of the reasons why we put it on today's agenda, just to kind of see where we're at as a board regarding it. And I'll start the discussion just to echo what I had already said. So Jeff, earlier, my concern with it is, I don't think this is a bad process. I feel we're wasting the board's time when we're going through it and nobody's here or nobody's asked for it. Where that one hearing, where we had to go through three of these, and we don't, we really don't know, you know, although I, we do have some thoughts of, you can personally register mail on one of these, that I think is a specific change with my request. But just in general, my thought was we're wasting, you know, we're putting a lot of these and suddenly we're doing it for a woman, three of them, nobody's here, but we're still going through motions of attempting to follow these steps. So my thought would be, I still think it's valuable if anybody would like it to take advantage of it, but my thought would be it shouldn't be the default, that it should be something that in that last letter that you would send it registered at that point, you say, hey, this is it. Next step is we're heading to court, we'll be filing a complaint. If you would wish to have this reviewed by the ZVA, you'd have to let us know within so many hours or something like that. And then I think, then we go through this and though we have somebody here. Otherwise, like the one where, you know, they can always ask for mediation, and we might get one or two of those where somebody comes through and just, we had one woman who came through who was a property owner, and just for whatever reason, we don't thank God any of the notices, but she didn't work towards it. So we just said, why don't you meet with the township and try to get their result before, nobody must go to court. So that was my only feedback that we were talking about, but I don't know how the other members here feel about this process.
And I think, Scott, to be fair to know, our normal meetings are usually at the half hour to an hour. That one was a two-plus-hour meeting. And it was, you felt every minute of it, because we were really inventing things as we were going. So we're really just trying to encase and define how this process can fit. And I think you're right. I think having it with, if the person says, yes, I like that process, and they can, is that part of this where we could ask them to say, are you interested in that? And again, is that another letter that we have to send out or a phone call? They can let us know. And if they don't show up, maybe we just have a process that we say, we did offer, they did accept but didn't show, or they didn't, we didn't hear from them, they didn't show. So we, at this point, are deferring it to continue on the path that it was on, just that, you know, that way at least we're not beating something that we have very little expertise in, and we don't know everything. Is it Clint who does the?
Clay.
Clay. He does the actual investigation. Is it possible that we get something from him as to maybe some specifics of what he attempted, so we have kind of a mini journey of, I went on this date, got this, did that, saw this, took pictures, here's, you know, again, not to say, but if we look at all the evidence that he had as to why we're getting here in the first place, it's a little better than the last time we were tiptoeing through it and saying, well, did we send him the letter out?
Right.
Yeah, I think, all right, I mean, for the last three, I included that in my staff report, the description of, we inspected at this date, sent the letter inspected at this date. And then for many of them, he didn't have photos for the inspections. But he did make sure to have at least one set of photos. And on a lot of those, there wasn't much change between the photos.
Well, there needs to be consistency in his process too. So he should take pictures, you know, have it all.
You're thinking pictures every inspection?
Whatever he does, he needs to be consistent.
And if it's timestamped, like most photos are, does show if the letters and everything else, I can't imagine if you get an undeliverable mail or a person doesn't receive it, we can at least say, our agent did attempt. You know, that way we have some way of saying on those dates.
One certified, registered, you know, at least one of them at the end, that we would have that card that comes back and says either undeliverable or unclaimed or. And even if Clint were to take one general picture each time, you know, I understand at a certain point, maybe he does need the 20. I guess I don't know if we need all 20 each time, but if you get that one general, I'm thinking of the one yard where, you know, 10 foot out in the road.
Yep.
You get all you needed right there.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, just to say, yeah, I was stacked here and I took another general picture without forcing him to go through the minutia each time.
Okay. And are there maybe some circumstances where a picture may not be able to describe that situation?
Yep.
Like a home-based business being operated out permanent or something like that?
Sure.
Need a statement?
Well, I would think in those, in those situations, a statement from them.
I think in that case, a letter might be able to work as the statement.
But then something, why do we know, you know, what, is there any proof to why there's, you know, a home-based business, for example, there, you know, what, you know, there was a complaint.
What's the rationale?
There should be, there should then be a general investigation at that point, just to tell us, you know, as you say, a picture may not do it. Do you have a minute?
If you wouldn't mind, I have a few questions I would like to discuss.
Okay, but I have a couple of questions. Are we suggesting that we're reducing the amount of our steps from 17 to three?
That would be way too easy.
I just need clarification as to.
A thought, or what I was thinking is our last. Number five. If I recall correctly, number, number five is our last letter out, where they didn't do mediation, or else we would normally have scheduled it to us. Shows up in that rate. So I would propose that number five.
Are you number eight?
No, we would go with a registered certified.
Okay.
Letter, but we would change that and say, if you don't request it, we're not an automatic review. If you don't care enough to request it and want us, I don't think we need to go through the steps to decide if it's been done right, then the township would just move on to legal action.
So number five would be the second, would be a second notice?
Mm-hmm.
I believe judges typically require three notices. So we will need to still send out that third notice, because I'm planning to implement the enforcement. I think the third notice, the third letter would be a letter with a ZVA date, saying, this is your third notice, this is one to be referred to as own board of appeals. I think that would be the fastest.
That should probably be cleaned up a little bit, though, because I don't even see a third letter.
I don't either.
It's not in the, it's not in the resolution.
Do you mind if I kind of jump in? Can you ask after Craig?
Well, I just want to, not at all, I just want to make sure we've got Marvin's question answered first.
Right. We get there, we get there.
No, that's, that's good, this is something.
Yeah, well, I, I have a few things. And, and so this is, this is a big part of it. And Craig and I talked, and I've talked to a few people, and it's, I knew it needed to come up. That's why we passed as a resolution, I didn't try to put it through as an ordinance, because it wasn't going to work right away. I didn't know what bugs were in it, but I knew there were going, there was going to be something. And the basic idea is that we want to make the process nice and objective. And I've heard complaints across multiple counties with people that I've talked to where a lot of times it isn't. There obviously has to be judgment. There has to be judgment on the part of the legal agent, which is the supervisor, the zoning administrator, the zoning enforcer. There has to be some sort of judgment, with some sort of review process being possible for people acting in court. So the way it was written initially, I tried to adjust the problems I could foresee, but obviously I couldn't foresee them all. I think one major issue in here that is easy for us to correct is mediation can be offered in the first letter. Steve pointed out not too long after the court asked us that why would you wait to offer mediation at certain points? You might as well offer mediation with the administration right off the bat. But then there needs to be an end time on mediation offer, where they would come in and talk to Steve.
So you're speaking of number three, where we send out first letter?
Yes, yep. So in, in the very first letter, we can say, you know, if, if you want mediation, if you want to extend the timeframe because it's a big issue, something like that, then contact the administration, contact the township, contact Steve, and we can work something out. Now, Steve had suggested answering questions on this. So for the mediation of, it can end up being an official document moving forward, and he was thinking that a written-out plan, which I think is a good idea, so then it's nice and objective, and both parties can see what it is, and possibly notarize is what we played with at first. But what he's run into is the people that want mediation often aren't working, and the township is open 9:40, which doesn't work out for most working business hours. And he was thinking about if just an email, a phone and email exchange to work out mediation would work for a written agreement still being in place. Does that, does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, big time.
What about for older assistants who do not use computers?
Right, then we could probably go with, with mailing, phone and mailing back and forth. That would probably still work, or maybe, I, I can mean.
I just.
Yeah.
My, my sense would be, this is pretty easy to, to fix with somebody who wants to work with the township.
Right.
And for us, I don't know if it matters how you come to the agreement.
I think you're right, yeah.
Hot air balloons and carrier pigeons.
Right, yeah.
If you get an agreement, that's, that's, that's specific enough that if they don't do something by a certain amount of time, then we know it. I think however, so that way you're tailing whoever.
I, I agree, yeah, that's, that's very reasonable. And, and it's not like you are the enforcement committee. The reason I didn't establish a separate enforcement committee is because I'm trying to not do huge, major overhauls and changes to the extent that we can adjust things within the bounds we already have. And it's already within statute that appeals, even of enforcement, can go to the zoning board of appeals. It's just, it's just rare, so you don't see it too much. So, so you're right, a big, I mean, a major part of this process, you're not necessarily in unless the appeal is coming to you, but knowing that a good process has been gone through, I think it's still important. And so mediation upfront, mediation, pretty, pretty flexible on that. I would like an opinion on what you guys think about the importance of a complaint being a complaint that someone gave us in writing with a form where you make a complaint about a property versus us just taking a verbal complaint and taking action on it. Is it an important difference or not?
In my head, it doesn't matter to us.
Right.
But what matters is, at any point, you determine there's a violation and start this process.
Sure.
How that gets figured out, I don't think we should be, I don't think we should have any part of that.
All right, yeah. And then for, so you're thinking, is everyone kind of comfortable with one registered or certified letter in the process? Okay, perfect, yeah, I think that it's a, it's a good balance. The thing is, most of the complaints that we get, even if a violation is bound, are resolved in the first one or two letters. So they don't really go very far into the process. We don't end up taking litigation, they don't have an appeal, they don't come to the board, they don't go through most of the further steps. They're just, they're the early stages. It's just for the ones that do, it's good to have a process in place for it.
But then my reference, depending on how the rest of us feel, is that's, that registered certified is a letter that heads to us.
Okay.
So that we know they didn't get a notice.
Hmm, okay.
That this is your shot to invoke your right to have our review, and we know they got that.
Okay, right.
I don't think it helps us to know letter number one or two. It's this last one where if we're going to give them this option.
Right.
I want to know they knew about it at that point in time.
Okay.
Because we wouldn't be there if one and two hadn't already.
Right.
But I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but that's the one.
Okay, and well, how, how would you like to get notice that that letter's getting sent out? You're saying you would like to get a letter at the same time, or just an email?
No, none of those.
Okay.
None of those, because I feel, now, this is just me, I don't want to talk over the top here.
Yeah, it's just the discussion, we're not making a decision, not anything.
I, I feel relatively strongly that we only get involved in this at the point that they ask us to.
Yep.
We do not get involved with the rest of it. We get a registered, we get proof that a registered letter was sent to them?
Yep.
They asked for it, they didn't show up, fine, done.
Right.
They asked for it, they do show up?
Yeah.
Great. They get the registered letter, they don't do anything, they don't ask for it, we're not involved.
Right, the administration.
You're jumping to the court.
Right.
So I don't, this is me personally, I don't want to be involved in all this.
That makes sense.
Minutia, I just want to, we're here if you want us.
Yeah.
We're going to make sure you knew about it.
Right.
Beyond that, I just.
Well, I'm sorry. Let's say it's township, I can answer too. Us means?
Yes.
Well, frankly, we have staff, we trust our staff.
Right.
Right?
That's why you're there.
So I don't ever want to be in a position where, I'm second guessing how our zoning administrator's doing.
Yeah, well, I completely get that. I just, I, I think my position, me, I should be second guessed potentially. And that's a lot of times where you run into the various stuff. I've, like, the land use educator at Michigan State University I was talking to, he said, that's often a controversy at, because the supervisor can take legal action, because the supervisor's the legal agent. And then whether or not he's taking appropriate legal action at which pace, and if it's consistent between different people, is not consistent.
But then that's what we're here for.
Right, exactly.
And that's when they need to request that.
Correct.
Because they're going to be engaged in that process.
Right, and right now.
And then we're here to help.
Exactly.
Somebody who is engaged in that process.
Right.
But you have to take that, not you.
Right.
They have to take that first step.
Yep, yeah, that's, yeah, that's completely fine. So, yeah, I think we, we can get a system that works and removes some of the arbitrariness and puts a more objective process in place. And I want to work this out in the resolution format before we move towards an ordinance, which is more set. But I mean, if we had this as an ordinance right now, we'd, we'd be in trouble, because there's issues in it, there, there's some holes in it. And so that would be, well, at least the law at the township level, and we would end up having trouble in court. And so those are just, they're the things that I'm trying to work out before moving there. And so on.
And if that's brought as a resolution, you know, that's where Nola helps us.
Right.
Because you're going to look at them and you're going to say, no, that's not at all what we wanted.
Right.
And then you're going to say, hey, or can we adjourn this, or take another, or you're going to say, yeah, that's exactly what we needed. I mean, that's why we've got a trustee.
Right, well, and through the ordinance process, it'll go through the planning commission, which day it's at. So, yeah, yeah, where it's crossed over, we're pretty good. And, and so basically, just, we'll do our letter process, right? First two letters, we'll offer mediation, this, that, and the other. And the third letter will just say that an appeal to the zoning board of appeals, if you don't like this enforcement process, if you disagree with it, is possible if requested by X date, something like that, certified letter.
So that would be the certified letter then, would be that?
The one that they could request to appeal. That make sense? Does everyone, does anyone think it should be different than that in any way?
Because the first two is between you and them, and it's the third one where we would be saying, okay, we've gone through the first two steps, here's where we are, we've educated them along the way, and we've incorporated us into the involvement on it needed. And then we also have them saying, yeah, I either want it or don't.
Right.
And if they don't show up, we've, we're still here to say they didn't show up, we've shown all due diligence and, you know, goodwill to say we're willing to do this, but, I mean, at that point, I don't think any judge would, would see any, any movement from us was lacking or inappropriate if they felt something was strongly, we were strong-arming somebody, they would have the ability to come in and say, this is not right, and we'd certainly be able to hear that.
Yeah, the courts themselves are a major check and balance against us. So, and we're solid legally, you know, on all the actions that we take, so. Okay, and.
So with the, with the third letter, that would be, I'm picturing that as a third, the third required letter that a judge is going to look for, with additional wording saying, you may appeal this, you know, this is a determination of the administrative staff, that you have the right to appeal.
Well, you're, you're, I would think you're informing them that the next step that the township is going to take is going to be to file a complaint. If you would like this decision to be reviewed first by the zoning board of appeals before that complaint is filed, you have 14 days to make that request, or 21, whatever.
Yeah, I don't think it would be, I don't think it needs to be 30 days.
Is reasonable.
Yeah.
And therefore, your, your letter's right there, if you never hear from them again, you've established everything you need on that third notice. If you do hear from them again, great, come out and, and it may be, if we go through that whole process and you still can't get anywhere, maybe a new third letter has to come out saying, you know, you used your appeal, weren't able to come to a resolution, we're just to inform you, we're not going to fuck with it, or you just found it.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that would get a movement.
Right, you could write a similar infraction. Well, and that's, and you, you brought up, so, because this is, this is worded as a type of local due process, which, you know, carries a lot of heavy weight in the legal field, which is an intention. For the motion specifically moving forward, like, so if someone does the appeal, they request the appeal, they come in, you find that they're still in violation, and you want to move forward, if to make a motion for doing that, I could include a specific structure for the motion that we could have reviewed by the township lawyer and everything, we could get it passed by the board, that way you have a specific structure on the motion, that way you're not just making a motion in whatever way it may come out that day. Would it make sense to have a very structured motion like that? Or do you want it how we do most motions, which is I make the motion, then yada, yada, yada?
I like the structure of the motion itself.
Yeah, I mean, that gives us specificity regarding the specific ordinance.
Right.
That isn't, that they're annihilation of.
Right.
And that they're annihilation of. And then we're done.
A judge would get that process, plus when Clay came through with all the pictures and everything out here, we got a, we built a pretty solid format for proceeding.
And legally, I don't think our process is really going to do much of anything. It just shows that the township took an extra step.
Well, legally, we're, we're already on solid footing. I, I don't need enforcement to go through the zoning appeals so that we win more cases, because we already win the cases because we've built up enough evidence. It's just essentially a check on, on making sure that I'm not putting the process through in, in a bad way or a way that shouldn't be occurring.
It would essentially be, as long as it's a resolution, it would essentially, the vehicle that would have to be used is the appeal of an administrative decision. So it would be, essentially, the motion would have to be upheld or overturned. Yeah, so that would just be language.
Yeah, yeah, I can look at the specifics of that. And I can check with the board and make sure that, that you guys are comprehensive on a specific motion as well.
And, and I know our review of our resolutions before they've been proposed to the board is limited, but if you wanted to send that out, I'd be happy to read through them, propose one, and get news based on our conversations.
Yeah, because I think.
You know, I can say Nola's a representative there, but I don't know.
Well, I think what we'll probably need to do, need to bring an adjusted resolution to do a better enforcement process with these adjustments to the board, put that in place, run it for a while again, another iteration essentially. If it's running well, then the proposal can come to the planning commission, they can use all of that information to go through the process for making an ordinance to propose to board. So, not a, not a short process, but come out with a, a good finished product.
Well, what you have, what we have now is workable.
It is.
Very efficient.
Right, yeah, I mean, there's no reason, because we're getting a ton of compl- Right, yeah, I mean, there's no reason, because we're getting a ton of compliance up front, one and two letters. And then it seems like a decent number of people that don't comply early on, even if you do the appeal process and everything for them, they're like, eh, I'm just not, I'm just not doing anything. Right, and so it's one way or the other. So there's no point in wasting your time of bringing those here if three out of four people are going to show up.
I did have a question about mediation. Typically, Clay works with anybody that, if they call him, say, "Hey, I need another week or two." They'll say, "Okay, I can give you another week or two." Depending on, depending on their situation. Eventually, he'll, he won't let people keep saying, "Oh, another two weeks, another two weeks." So that's typically what he does. Would you say that, if documented, that would qualify as mediation for your purposes?
Maybe.
Maybe.
I think it just...
I think it's important to have Clay involved in mediation, but he's also only here once a week.
The concern I would have is if he does this informal process, right? So he sends a letter out, they talk to him, we kind of do this informal, "I'll give you a few extra weeks, hey, I'm just, I can get another one?" "Sure." That's a very informal, I think should be encouraged, because frankly, you get that wrapped up down, everybody's happier. The mediation, so then we do that, the mediation still is not until this very end process. And so I just, I think it depends on what the situation is. If they talk three times in the very beginning, and then we send out a couple of letters, maybe we're remote enough from where we started that they need to have one more discussion. But they may not want mediation, you know, they may feel like done that. Once again, I'll go back to, I want to stay out of all that.
Right.
Let somebody else, let that person argue that they didn't have enough opportunities to mediate.
Right.
I don't think it's our job to tell you you've got to do, to achieve mediation, you guys deal with this all the time. I mean, you know when somebody's starting to push it solely for the sake of pushing it. I don't want to be in the middle of that, right? Just like, and if they want to come here, if they appeal and they say, "We never got to mediate." Okay, now it's before us, now we can actually ask, "Okay, what happened here? What did you do?"
Yeah, and that's why I raised the question, is if they, you know, they're given a couple of extensions, but they still didn't, they didn't clean it, and then, oh, they didn't take up on mediation. Or they get the, you know, they get the second letter and say, "Oh, I want to mediate again." But they were given, you know, a month and a half of extension. Do we have to say, "Okay, we'll mediate," or do we say, "You were already given mediation"?
Well, I think Craig's decision... Craig, you know, correct me if you're wrong. I would say his opinion is that that's an administrative decision.
Yeah. We trust you guys to figure out when you should break it down.
But if it's appealed to you, would you?
If it's appealed to us, now we have to determine.
Yes.
The facts specific to that. And I would also say mediation doesn't mean, "We'll give you another extension."
Right.
Mediation maybe, "We've given you five, we're done now, but let's talk that through." No, we're still done.
Right.
You know, but that's what I'm saying, that's up to... You may run into one where you say, "Let's go to West Shore, just give a resolution, it's worth 150 bucks to go there." Great. Not saying that's going to happen, but I mean, and that's a pure mediation. I just, I feel strongly, I don't think we should be in the middle of that. And not, and not tell you prospectively what will fly with us now, because of that.
Yeah, well, it has to be on a case-by-case basis, yeah.
Yeah, because is there a set, you know, it's four junk cars on my property. And I, you know, does Clay go in and say, "Well, four junk cars, that's a two-week window." Or is it a month window, or is it, you know, is there a standard that they have for that? Or is it something he uses his judgment on, and does he run it then through you? Or is it some, how does that process?
The standard is two weeks.
Okay.
And that's something he typically determines himself, since that's his responsibility, is enforcement of the ordinance. And a lot of times it depends on the situation, kind of if he's been working with a gentleman that's... He's chairbound, so he's been working with him, you know, doing in-home, in-home discussions to try and mediate the situation without giving him the opportunity to work, work it through, because he's very dependent on others to help.
That certainly plays better from our side.
Yeah.
That I could see if we've done, we also went to the home and we had meetings and, you know, that's obviously going above and beyond what I would consider a standard. Here's your letter, you have two weeks, here's your second letter, and you didn't apply, you know, "Can I get another week?" "Yeah, we did two weeks, three, and another week." And, you know, it seems, it seems pretty humane to be able to say... That's really what we're trying to do, is be not as much needed, but when we are, to step in and be able to mediate it from the mediation, to say, "Yeah, you did, we did what we, you know..." The observations were noted, you were given notice, you were given a period of time. We can check things off on our side to say, "Yeah, it seems fair." And I can't imagine too many times that, I don't think, I've never seen building towns to not be fair. You know, I've not seen us, we're going heavy-handed, we try to go, again, we're not a factory where we're going to kick it in and say, "I'm sorry, you met your deadline, your interest rate now kicks in," or anything like that, you know, nothing to where there's a financial gain to us. It's really, you know, it's be good neighbors, and that's really what our role is.
So is that unhelpful enough?
I think it's helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
Making sure we document all of that.
And I would think he should be documenting each of each conversation.
He does, he puts it all in.
He writes notes.
In DSA, he puts notes in there.
Yeah, just a quick little...
Yep.
And then if we just document that in sort of a form letter, if they request mediation, saying, you know, "We did this, this, and this, we can give you this," but then it has to take care of it.
Oh, I have a question.
Yeah.
Let's take the name Clay out of the picture. Do you have standard administrative procedures, laws, processes?
Just for the enforcement process?
For enforcement or mediation?
There largely just been generally followed procedures. So the more, a more strict step-by-step process that you're talking about is what I'm working on right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm working on creating it. A lot of times, what ends up happening is municipalities don't like having one, because it's where you can hang yourself up if you want to move faster and you feel like, eh, in this case, we kind of skipped this step. You now can't, because it's a rule that you can't skip. Whereas every now and then, in some cases, you could otherwise, but I don't like that. So that's why I'm working on making it so that we can.
Yeah, so when things come to us, we really are trying to make the certification part of what you guys do.
Right.
We are extremely confident in your abilities and skills and what you do. We just want to make sure that there's enough evidence, that whatever the issue is brought before us, we're being fair, and that the resident has received full understanding and expectations, what is expected of them, for us to run the subject decision, fair decision, so.
Because we would get, you were given two weeks, you then were given a one-week extension. We can review the journey and say, "And that's why we are here today." So we feel confident that we follow due process, so at this point, it's time to either, you know, you fix it, or unfortunately, you've been given that time and it's now time to move on, or, you know, I guess that's really, we're just the... Like, we really thought that wasn't going to be in the last two, and it was anything but that. It was much more painful than we got into the, what color were the eyes and what time was it?
Right. And, oh yeah, the unfortunate debt case over there as well, so that was a time eater.
But in all cases, as a board, we try to work with the citizens. And that's what we hear.
Yeah.
To work with them, so that they feel successful, that they have a local government that's working with them.
Right.
To achieve what they're trying to accomplish.
Just wanted to start arguing with each other. And by not submitting to the city, that gets a little...
Okay.
All right, anything?
That was the last meeting, which...
We don't need to be discussing taking issue.
Feel free to reach out to me, you know, anytime, about any of the steps.
All right, is there anything else regarding the enforcement process before we move on? All right, discussion. Yeah, it's nice to have that, I really think, that's nice to have that option for them, if they want to take it, so. All right, next will be elections of officers for 2022. I think we have, we have our chair.
And Ken was the vice chair.
And then we have our secretary, which has to sign the limits, yes. So, and I'll start off, if anybody wants to run some meetings, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I'd like to nominate somebody for that position.
And I don't want anybody to think of keeping a stranglehold in this particular spot.
I speak for the board. He certainly do not feel that way.
I feel way too green yet to fulfill any of those.
Looking for our lawn signs and our buttons.
Yeah, just to stay there, so.
I'd like to nominate NOLA as vice chair.
Steve, so, um...
Oh, what was that?
Me, um...
Wait a minute.
So the zoning enabling act and the bylaws actually don't allow the township trustee to serve as chair.
Could she do vice chair, because he was saying for...
It wouldn't be a good idea, because the vice chair would need to serve as chair, if the chair weren't here.
Gotcha.
I don't believe anything from any of those.
Very nice to have some motion.
Clay, they should be telling him from the movie, we just lost one.
We need three spots, and we have three of those, we've got a bill here, more than a meeting.
Oh, jeez. How do we extend the board?
Flip for it.
I'll be thankful.
I'll get you a couple of them.
Well, if anybody wants to propose a joint motion, perhaps?
We could do it as, Marvin, are you feeling comfortable? Would you be, I think you would be an excellent vice chair.
You nominated somebody else here. You didn't duck when that boomerang came back your way. And then David, are you volunteering to stay as secretary? If I volunteer to stay as chair, is that what that is considered?
Well, let's get the first two taken care of first, and I will, that sounds good. I have no problems, it's a pretty, pretty simple process, I think, the way it is now. And certainly in your case, I think we need somebody with your experience that will help us as we navigate this process here. And I think Marvin has brought some very good points up also. So I think the team of Onette Nash is...
I think it's funny, because you make a big out of touch rates to get out of the way of that, and if you rank that to you. I'm humor in that, so.
It is funny.
All right, is there a second for that?
I'm sorry.
Very strong second. Do we need to do those individually, or can we do them?
I believe you can do them together.
Yeah, I would think, all right, so we have a motion and support on the floor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, that motion carries, and I'm planning on being sick for the next two meetings. No, I wait to see the agenda. Yeah, if we get another citizen for a citizen, I think. I'm just saying. All right, before we wrap the meeting up and I lose my agenda, I do know we had a moment for public comment. Although, I don't believe we have any public here, unless Jeff, you want to speak as a member of the public? All right. Any other board remarks or anything else anybody would like to state? Otherwise, I think we can adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn, support.
All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? We are adjourned at six, what, 46 or so. Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion?
We did that as all...
All three of them, same night?
Yeah, we did them all together.
So who did the origination of the motion?